Good evening. It's unfortunately 7:20. We had some delays in our closed session. We had run past it. We apologize for the late and tardy start. We had some issues that needed our attention before we could come into open session. I'd like to call the meeting into order, and I'll turn to our clerk for a roll call, please.
Yes, Ms. Hodges, Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rollers Burgen?
Here.
Mayor Kleindeans?
Here. If you'll all please rise for the flag salute by our Palm Springs High School Junior Air Force ROTC.
Forward, march!
Please join us in the flag. My flag is...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, march! Hold the colors! Hold! Left, head! Forward, march!
Good job.
Great job.
They were just commenting on the beautiful chrome domes, those chrome helmets that the gentleman had on. Very nice, weren't they, Jeanie? Very nice. Thank you. Tonight we have an invocation by a chaplain from 29 Palms Marine Corps Air Ground Combat Center, Chaplain Betsy. Sir, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, sir. Pleasure to have you here, and we're honored that you took time to come down and give us our invocation tonight. Thank you for coming down.
That's you, stand right there.
You can stand either side if you feel comfortable, sir. Whatever you feel like doing.
I want to remember my back and cocky.
Let us pray. Loving God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today. This approaching the weekend of Memorial Day, where we also celebrate soon the 100th birthday of Bob Hope. For 40% of our nation's history, Bob's been with us, and for almost 75 years, been our entertainer par excellence. Memorial Day also reminds us not only of Bob's trips, but of the many men and women who have made sacrifices with their lives so that we would have and protect the freedoms we enjoy, knowing that humbles us, fills us with thanksgiving and gratitude, and refocuses our efforts to be servants of the people for the people. So we ask your blessings on this meeting tonight and all that we take on for this city and this area. Amen. All right. Thank you, sir. Tonight, as the chaplain mentioned, we're going to honor Mr. Hope. There are a number of activities scheduled for Bob Hope's 100th birthday. We have a banner up downtown, as I'm sure you saw, and there are a number of activities scheduled in Rancho Mirage at the Eisenhower Medical Center. They'll be having something at 2 o'clock on the 29th at the Annenberg Center for Health Sciences. We have something scheduled here for Village Fest that same week, and I believe the Camelot Theater hasn't been scheduled on that day also. So there will be a number of locations where there will be an opportunity to celebrate Bob Hope's 100th birthday, and he has a number of obvious contributions that are local. And I thought perhaps a proclamation would be ordered, although this is not the final one, the other one will be finalized in a frame. I thought it appropriate that at this juncture, we'd have the opportunity to read a proclamation honoring Mr. Hope. So with that, this is a proclamation of the city of Palm Springs, and whereas Bob Hope, whose birth name was Leslie Towns Hope, was born in Eltham, England on May 29, 1903, the fifth of seven sons, and where he was but four years of age when his family migrated to Cleveland, Ohio, where during his younger years, he worked such very jobs as delivery boy, soda fountain clerk, shoe salesman, amateur boxer, and a newspaper reporter. And whereas Bob Hope's show business career started with The Fatty Arbuckle Show in the early 20s, he sang, he danced, he did comedy, and he doubled on the saxophone. And whereas in over 70 years of show business, 57 of those years in broadcasting with NBC, radio, and television, and after 50 movies, Mr. Hope has been honored by his peers, emperors, presidents, governments, and the armed forces throughout the world. Honorary doctorates, the Peabody Award, a special Oscar, an Emmy, the Congressional Gold Medal are only a few of the honors bestowed upon him. And whereas Bob Hope, who entertained thousands of troops during World War II, started his legendary Christmas show in 1948 during the Berlin Airlift, and continued his road trips throughout the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and of course the Desert Storm. Bob Hope's specialty is lifting the human spirit. Ask any G.I. And whereas Bob Hope brought his Palm Springs home here in 1941, and has been the honorary mayor of Palm Springs since 1948, and has been one of Palm Springs' most highly respected and beloved citizens, it is with that that I, William G. Kleindeans, Mayor of the City of Palm Springs, by the power vested in me do hereby proclaim May 29, 2003, to be, of course, Bob Hope Day. So there's the formal read. He will... As the entire Coachella Valley will continue on his birthday to honor him for his incredible contributions, his list of philanthropic activity in this community is long, lengthy, and greatly appreciated, and you'll see a lot of people talking about all the great things he has done. Secondary on our presentation list is honoring a gentleman who has served in this capacity, has served up on the dais with many of us, had done phenomenal work as a member of our council, and once leaving this area, in a very comical way I might add, the closing night was still memorable, continued to work for the community in putting on a very special sort of niche festival in film. And in talking with Art Lions, as all of us have, I thought it appropriate that perhaps we honor the work that he's doing upcoming this shortly, actually starting on Bob Hope's birthday. We'll start with the Film Noir Festival. So if I may, I'd like to read Mr. Lyons. Why don't you come to the podium and prepare for your comments, because we'd love to hear from you. Art, this is a proclamation of the city of Palm Springs, whereas Film Noir is an important historical part of our nation's cinematic heritage and one of those of only two U.S. American film genres. And whereas the Palm Springs Film Noir Festival is to be held on May 29 through June 1 at the Camelot Theater, it is now in its third successful season. And whereas the Palm Springs Film Noir Festival has received national and international acclaim and has attracted attendees to Palm Springs from all over the world. And whereas this festival brings together legendary stars and films that evoke an era of Hollywood and Palm Springs glamour that should be cherished and remembered. And whereas the city's dragnet is out for all of the Coachella Valley's gangsters, gun moles, and deadly dames to come to Palm Springs and once more walk down those mean streets of Film Noir. Now therefore, I, Will Kleindeans, Mayor of the City of Palm Springs, by the power vested in me do hereby proclaim May 29 through June 1, Palm Springs Film Noir Weekend. Here you are, enter your festival.
You took all my lines. This is our third year, our third successful year. I don't know of any film festival that's actually gone into the black on the second year without public funds, not a dime of public funds, which I'm very proud of. And I'm very proud that to be recognized for participating and helping the name of Palm Springs be recognized. The difference, there's six Film Noir Festivals in the United States, but this one is different in a lot of ways, and basically it is because it's for fun. And this is not a film festival where you come in, sit down, watch a film, and leave. We've got Mickey Spillane coming back, your buddy. We have Marsha Hunt. We have Ann Savage, who I found out Film Noir, a lot of it is built on coincidence. The plot stories depend on coincidence. And Ann Savage came up to me, she starred in Detour last year, and she came up to me and said, "Are you related to Art Lions?" And I went, and I thought there was a famous agent named Art Lions. I said, "You mean the agent?" She said, "No, the guy who owned the bowling alley on Vine Street." I said, "Yeah, it was my father." She said, "I dated him." She said, "I ran in with my first movie contract," and I said, "Art, I got a movie contract." She'll be back. But we're also having a bookstore. We've got a video store in the lobby of the Camelot, which that's another thing I'm proud of, is being a part of the Camelot, because I saw the first movie that was ever shown there, which was Towering Inferno, when Bill Holden was on the stage. We've got Helen Garber, a photographer, a noir photographer, who will be on, she'll be there Saturday and Sunday displaying her work, but she will be doing a show at the Getty Museum the Friday. So, and we have Rick Harley from Flaherty's, leading the charge with the, as he did last year. And all you people who have seen that car, that police car parked out in front of Flaherty's, will see it run with the sirens going and with the, yes, and we've got a 1938 Zephyr coming down from San Francisco, and Jim Chiaffi will be driving his 1955 Chevy. So it's going to be fun. I just encourage everybody to come out and have a good time.
Thank you.
Good job.
You're leaving?
Remember what?
Yeah, remember your old seat.
Obviously, the intent there was to give some exposure for the festival and let people know of the great work that Art and his friends and his volunteers are doing. It's a great part of Palm Springs. If you haven't ever... If you haven't ever been there, everybody comes, if you will, in costume. If you saw Art, you have to see his shoes, mind you, the white and blacks are just, they're incredible. But it's really a fun, real fun evening, number of evenings. Although not agended here, we have a special announcement that was given to us this week, and it wasn't able to get on the agenda. I'm gonna ask everyone with cell phones to put them on silent mode or turn them off due to obvious interruptions. We have been notified that there is a member of our community who is going to be acknowledged for his outstanding and exceptional commitment to one of our nation's greatest organizations. Annually, apparently, there is an award called the California Golden Bear Award, and this has been developed to promote and recognize outstanding performance and exceptional commitment to the mission of the American Red Cross in California. This honorable recognition in the category of management is merited by an individual who provides creative leadership to his or her chapter, its staff, and its governance volunteers. The individual selected will have developed an effective series of programs and service delivery systems, and demonstrated success in fundraising, fiscal management planning, and obviously, problem solving. It is with great pride that the American Red Cross Riverside County Chapter has nominated our fire chief, Barry Fried, to accept this year's award for the 2003 Golden Bear Award. And it is with that, I don't know if Barry's aware of it or not, but he has been nominated, and I think he gets the nod, doesn't he, Mark? What's going on there?
Recipient of 2003 Golden Bear Award.
Mark, why don't you come up at this point, and Barry, why don't you join him at the podium Gentleman here is Mark Robatai, he is the Director of Development for the American Red Cross, our Riverside County Chapter, and is our sort of local rep and good friend of ours, because he takes care of us in emergencies. Mark, give us the good news in greater detail, sir.
Well, thanks. It's been a pleasure having Barry serve on our Board of Directors for the past three years, and he's just made such a tremendous impact on our organization in a positive way. I mean, the list just goes on, I can't even describe. So we took it upon ourselves to nominate him for this great award. It's a prestigious award from the State Service Council, and a lot of stiff competition, and Barry was recognized this year as a recipient of the 2003 award, and will be formally recognized June 19 in Burbank at the State Service Council meeting.
Very good.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Barry, for your great work, sir. Excellent. We'll now turn to our city clerk for a report on the posting of the agenda, please.
Yes, the agenda before you was posted in accordance with council procedure on Friday, May 16, and a supplemental agenda was posted that same day. In addition, you have received additional materials regarding items 2 and 25, and the city manager has withdrawn items 17 and 18.
Okay. Any questions on those changes? Otherwise, we'll turn to our city attorney for a closed session report. Mr. Alshier?
Yes, council needs a minute and closed session. On the closed session agenda, real property negotiations with Riff Markowitz involving the Plaza Theater, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The items listed involving the Brussels Building, the propriety of Anselia and Arenas, and the Jerry Johnson Proprietary Cherokee in East Palm Canyon, those three items were not discussed. The Desert Water Agency real property negotiations were not discussed. The three downtown parking structure items, the lease negotiations were not discussed. Litigation matter involving Wilkinson, we gave a status report, no action was taken. We discussed exposure litigation in one case, no action was taken. We did not discuss initiation of litigation, and we did discuss the employee negotiations, and no action was taken.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Alshier. The Housing Authority, the Finance Authority, and the Industrial Development Authority have no business scheduled tonight. We do have an agenda before us as the Community Redevelopment Agency, and with that, we will adjourn as a city council and convene as a CRA. First order of business before the body is the approval of minutes of the May 7 meeting.
So move.
I'll second that.
A motion for approval on Ms. Ella Spurgeon, and second by Mr. Oden. I'll note my abstentions, I was not in attendance at the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, note my abstentions. There are no public hearings scheduled tonight. Anyone wishing to address the Community Redevelopment Agency during public comments, we do have public comments later on for council meeting. I have not seen any cards here that indicate a CRA request. Anyone wishing to address the CRA, please come forward at this time. Very good, seeing no one, we'll close public comments and turn to our legislative calendar. First item is item A, and this is a repayment and relending of loans, and Mr. Ready, I'll turn to you for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a ministerial action in accordance with the state rules. There is no effect to the general fund on this, and we would recommend your approval. Thank you.
Mr. The Agency, questions or comments on staff report, or your pleasure? There are two resolutions before you.
I'm with the resolutions.
Second, both of them.
Motion for approval on Mr. Oden, and second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mayor Kleindings?
Aye. It's 4-0, it's deemed unanimous. Under city counts, we will adjourn now as a CRA and reconvene a city council. First order of business before the council is public comments. I have a number of cards here requesting the opportunity to speak. I'd like to call three or four of you forward, and if you could form a line, and we'll bring you up with three minutes for each of you. There's a clock in front of Genie and one in front of me. The clock goes from three minutes and counts down, and at the sound of the bell, we ask you to close your comments, so we can move forward to the next speaker. First speaker is Robin Burns, followed by Larry Steckel. M. Dodd Sarker and Sven Holm, please.
Good evening. I'm Robin Burns, very proud to be here as Secretary Treasurer representing the Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association. We're your goodwill ambassadors, we are probably the first people tourists see and deal with when they come in, and the last ones they see when they leave. My husband and I own Classic Cab and Classic Transportation here in Palm Springs. For eight long years, we've built our business year-round here, and currently provide jobs for approximately 15 persons. Without question, the seasonal nature of our business has created a need to establish cash flow in ways that do not depend upon the tourist season. Advertising on taxi cabs is an established media for advertising in every major city in the country. Palm Springs has had a ban on advertising here for quite some time. Many changes have occurred since this ban was written. Our population is growing as a city like never before. There were no casinos when this ban was written. We are looking to change this regulation in order to move into a greater level of stability and prosperity for our industry. How would this adversely affect our city? There would be no pollution generated. As a matter of fact, at least 15 of the vehicles to be advertised on are clean, natural gas vehicles. There would be no noise generated to disturb populace. As far as eyesores go, we are talking about a sign board approximately 52 inches by 15 inches. We are not talking about a 50-foot monument sign in the middle of town. We are talking about promoting local businesses in our city and region. This would only help bring visitors to our area when we go out of town to LAX or other areas. More importantly, this outdated and a bit snobbish ban on advertising, which only exists in Palm Springs, is preventing the hard-working companies that provide public transportation for all of us to earn about $1.4 million in revenue. The cash flow generated from this income would allow me to update my fleet, provide a better level of service for my clients, with technical equipment that I cannot afford now, and stabilizes our profit margin. With current gas prices, including higher costs for CNG gas, current escalating insurance in a shrinking market, high costs of administrative fees that we must bear, and the incredible cost of Yellow Page advertising, we pay approximately $2,100 a month just for my company. This extra source of income provides a much-needed income cushion. What is important to remember as well is that this $1.4 million paid to taxi operators for advertising is wanted and proven to work by advertisers. What is also incredibly important is that it follows that this money will be spent in our own city and region. As a city council member, remember that this money will benefit our own area's economy by continuing with the outdated regulation Palm Springs is keeping in the dark ages. This advertising income personally means an income of approximately $50,000 per year for my taxis. Why are we taking outdated views in city council instead of reaching for new heights? I challenge you members to rethink this regulation and help your own city move ahead into a thriving economy. Thank you, members.
Larry, followed by M. Dodd, and then Sven Holm, please.
Hi there. My name is Larry Steckel. I've been driving a taxi in Palm Springs basically 12 years. I'm in favor of putting the advertising on signs on our taxis on the agenda next week, and I don't think I can say anything better than Robin. That's just basically what we want. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. M. Dodd, followed by Sven Holm, and then Sohan Singh.
City Council, appreciate this opportunity to talk to you, and actually, I'm talking about item, agenda item 19.
19, thank you, sir.
And it's Tennis Club City Light District, and the city has had two meetings with Dave Barakian and Bob Moller, and I was there on both.
Could I get your name into the record, sir?
Yes, Sven Holm.
Right.
You didn't botch it, you did well. I also met with the city attorney, Mr. Alshier, and Bob Moller, Dave Barakian discussed it. And I have been meeting with some of the people in the light district, Peter Dixon, Frank Tyson, Marshall Hamlin, and we have also contacted several residents, and one of the things we're requesting is that the city council hold off a vote on this issue, because we think there is a better solution to it, and maybe getting rid of some of the lights, and improving the looks of it. And what we'd like to do is just have an opportunity to get hold of some of the people, and Bob Moller has furnished me with a list of the people in the Tennis Club Light District. We'd like to get hold of them, talk to them, and then present a solution to the city council later this fall, if that would be possible. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. M. Dodd, followed by Sohan Singh. Is it Antacio?
It's honor of City Council and Palm Springs City Council and the mayor. So I cannot speak that much, just I come over here to, either way you can do our advertising on the taxi, that's all we, I cannot, I am not speaker, I cannot speak that much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sohan Singh, Antacio de Alencio?
My name is Sohan Singh. I own a USA cab company. I come here to support Coachella Valley Taxi Association, for put a sign on my taxi, then I can pay my bills. Thank you.
Thank you. James Breako, Bill Myers? Yusomeng Sunny?
Good evening, City Council. My name is James Breako. I am the manager of VIP Express Taxi. We are based in Palm Springs. We have been here for almost 10 years. I'm also a member of the Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association, and I think a lot of good things have already been said about the reasons why we want advertising on the taxis, and I am here to ask that that be put on the agenda so that we can litigate and possibly move forward on that issue of being able to generate more revenues for our companies and provide better transportation service for the whole Coachella Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bill Myers, Yusomeng Sunny, and Giante Pretter? Bill?
Good evening. My name is Bill Myers. I'm the owner of Bay Valley Cabazine in Palm Desert. Just recently, on May 5, we celebrated our 20th year in business, and we started in 1983, and we started in 1983, you guys had some ordinances up here that didn't permit me to work up here. I wasn't allowed to work up here, and I haven't been here since 1991, when we fought to break that ordinance. Now, that's an ordinance that needed to be changed. I think the taxi cab advertising ordinance does need to be changed, and you need to reconsider that, because it is a great increase in income for all our businesses, and we all work hard at it, and we spend all year out here servicing the public and the tourists. And as you know, since 9/11, lots of things have changed. We haven't had the greatest tourist seasons the last two years. Everybody's working hard to make money, and things need to change. You know, when I was coming up here, I saw the airport road was all tore up. That's getting changed because of 9/11. I'm sure when you guys put that in there, you thought that was gonna be the perfect road. It wasn't the perfect road. It had to be changed because of 9/11, and we need better security at the airport. We need ways to make money, to stay in business, to pay our bills, to improve our companies, to improve our service, and to improve our lifestyles. You know, we all wanna retire at some point in time. I don't wanna be here in another 20 years talking about some other ordinance. I'd like to be golfing somewhere. That's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Yusomeng Sunny? Yeah?
My name is Yusomeng. Thank you for allowing me here. I'd like to request you to allow advertising on taxi to survive our business. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Giante Pretter? Sergio Santo? And Don Ruiz?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Giante Pretter. I work with American Cabs, and we came here, everybody, to get the permission for advertisement on taxi. And you can understand, you know, day by day, the business go down, we need some more money, so we can pay our bills, and we can have some more money. So please, give us permission for advertisement in a taxi. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don Ruiz? Sergio Santo? Alturo Diaz? You'll all come down, please? If you'll give your name to the city clerk, I'd appreciate it.
Don Ruiz, I've been out there in this area about 25 years, and this whole valley, it seems like it's been mostly a part-time seasonal job, so anything that we can do to help the cities and whoever's working in the area would definitely be a plus. I work underneath Yellow Cab, and I'm subcontractor underneath Yellow Cab, so I don't see any fallback in it at all. I think anything that we can do to keep everything prosper and growing is for the better. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sergio Santo? Alturo Diaz? And William Husbands Jr., please.
Good evening. How's everyone tonight? My name is Sergio Santo, I'm the president of the CBTOA. As you've heard, a lot of our people here tonight, they're just average people, we're here to ask that the city council place on next week's agenda the advertising on taxi issue to change the ordinance that Palm Springs now has in effect. We've already been to your planning commission back in March of this year, and basically, we, the planning commission, did not grant us the right to have this placed on the agenda. So basically, we're exhausting all the revenues, or avenues that we have to get this, you know, out in the open and discussed. This is really something that is needed by our industry, and we would appreciate anything the city council can do for us. If you could put this on the agenda for next week, we would deeply appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Alturo Diaz. I'm in the same situation, I'm a taxi owner, and we'd like to ask you to change that ordinance so we can make some more income and go ahead with our lives and businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. William Husbands Jr., Constantine, Konstantinicio?
How you doing? My name is William Husbands Jr. I'm a taxi owner, and I'm representing 40 of the independent taxi drivers out there. We would like to request to have this put on the agenda for a vote to approve this taxi cab advertising. Our income has been going down for the last year and a half, and we feel that this would really help put a boost into the industry. I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Konstantin Konstantinescu. I live in this town in Palm Springs for 13 years. I come from New York, and I work taxi driver in this valley, and thank you for City Council for the taxi advertising in this valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Gerald Lim, please. Followed by Shirley Bush and Richard Pontus, Clint Holland and Robert Hill.
Dr. Gerald Lim, from the piranha swim team.
From the piranha swim team. I want to take this opportunity to recognize City Manager David Ready for his leadership role in conceptualizing the bulkhead addition to the pool, to the Palm Springs Pool that will effectively increase the usable pool space for the most heavily in demand use of the pool by 50%. I also want to thank the Parks and Rec staff, Vicky Alteen and Scott Miccell, for their role in researching and working out the details for this valuable addition to the city facilities. This bulkhead is just in the nick of time as we approach an Olympic year. Competitive swimming interest and participation here has tripled in less than a year. And Vicky Alteen will confirm that the pool would not be able to accommodate even the piranhas alone next high school swim season, let alone two teams. In the long run, this will probably be the best thing that ever happened to youth, for the youth involved in aquatic sports in Palm Springs, and will help in bringing Palm Springs to the forefront of the nation's swimming again, hopefully to even better our past results of an Olympic silver medal and two Olympians. Thank you very much.
Shirley, I think it's your show.
Okay. I'm here in behalf of Quail Point and three other similar developments that have the same controlled sales price by the city. My name's Shirley Bush. I own a condo at Sunrise Palms, which is next door to Quail Point, and we have the same resale restriction. I'm also a realtor. A seller has to provide the city with a written contract, escrow instructions, along with their written request for an acceptable sale price. You do not receive written approval or disapproval until you have a buyer and an accepted offer. There are 565 units in these four developments. Maintaining all these files and communicating per phone and in writing to all these homeowners, agents, and buyers is very time-consuming and costly to the city. I realize how busy the city is with all the new developments. I've been a realtor with Mary Ellen for the past 18 years, and I have never seen so many new developments. I think it's wonderful. But the city should not forget or neglect these developments in lieu of the new. The city has been involved with these four tracts since early and late 1980s. Three of the four tracts are single-family homes. They do not have an association or any other governing entity. It's so common to hear an owner say they were not aware of the resale restriction or CCNRs. An example, Sunrise Norte has 29 years left to its lease. Lenders require five added years. For a 30-year loan, a lender will require at least 35 remaining years to the lease. At this time, Sunrise Norte can only obtain a 20-year loan, which amounts to plus or minus $150 more per month from that borrower. Also, drive by and look at the disrepair of the wooden fences. It's not a pretty sight. This is not Indian leased land. The city is the lessor. You do not have to negotiate with the Indians. I have in hand 80% of the homeowners of Quail Point, written requests to remove this resale restriction, and written consent from 88% of all mortgage lenders. It actually comes to 95% of all written requests from the mortgage lenders, what I mailed out. There's only two lenders that did not respond. I hope the city will grant these homeowners their request, as these lenders have granted their borrowers their consent to remove this restriction. I contacted the Economic Development Department on April 25th to hand over all of these written documents. I have called them several times, but they have not contacted me. I would appreciate a contact when I or Mr. Pontius, homeowner of Quail Point, can turn these all over. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Richard Pontus, followed by Clint Holland, and then Robert Hill.
Good evening. My name's Richard Pontius. I'm resident of Quail Point. I bought the property two and a half years ago, and I'm one of those people that you commented got suckered in because my realtor told me not to worry about it. Obviously, you can't ignore an ordinance, and that's what we're here to get that ordinance changed. We've worked very hard since in December, actually, to get the citizens of that 83 parcels in Quail Point to understand the issue and agree to it. We, we did that. We got them to agree to it. We came, met with the city on February 3rd. The city said they understood the issue. In fact, they encouraged us to encourage, actually Shirley, to proceed with this issue. We said, okay, we'll go, what we were concerned about is trying not to have to go back to all the lenders. And the ordinance does require the lenders have to approve at 75%. We went back to the lenders. We went back actually to all the property owners because the lenders wanted to see something in writing from each of the property owners. So as any city government can see, we've spent hundreds and hundreds of hours going back and forth on this issue with lending agencies, the property owners, and the city. Now we're being told, and at that February 3rd meeting, we were said, we were told, we'll proceed with your project, Quail Point, first, and we'll use it as a model to proceed with the others. Now we're being told that we're going to have to wait until somebody else decides to move on these other projects. The only reason these projects happened, or Quail Point happened, was because of Shirley and a number of us neighbors getting together, going banging on doors. That's not going to happen with those other projects. And we don't feel it's right that we should have to wait until such time that those projects get their act together, which may never happen. And city staff surely don't have time to, to push something like that. So we're requesting that we be brought up to date when this can be brought before council because, to me, it's pretty much a slam dunk situation. I worked for a city government, City of Oakland, for 10 years. I retired early, moved down here to start a new life. And I, I know how difficult these things can be, but this one is really such a slam dunk. All someone, all somebody has to do is write a modification to the ordinance and present to staff and pass because the public in this 83 parcel wants it to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clint Holland? And then Robert Hill?
Yes, my name is Clint Holland. I appreciate the opportunity to address the city council. I am also a property owner at Quail Point and would like to emphasize just what Richard said. We've worked real hard to get the, the property owners at Quail Point, that specific development, as well as the lenders onboard in terms of pursuant to the CCR's requirement. As far as I can see, really reading the CCRs, the city has the, has the power to rescind or annul the issue, probably without going to get to all of the 50% and 75% of the owners. And I see that there's no benefit to the city, and it's an accumbrance for the property owner. And as a matter of fact, I think it's, it's red tape for the city at this point. The development was completed, or 12, 13 years ago. And those prices, when you increase the CP, Consumer Price Index and so on, they become not affordable housing any longer anyway. So I would appreciate the city's assistance in approving the Quail Point development on its own for rescinding that. And of course, then the other developments. I'm not working on those, but I have a voice that if they make as much sense as rescinding the Quail Point development does, that we do that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Robert Hill?
Good evening. My name is Robert Hill, and I've lived also in Quail Point for the last seven years. Just until recently, I had no idea there was a resale restriction on my home. It has to be taken in consideration because almost all of the homeowners in Quail Point, which is 83, have written consent to take it off as well as their lenders. With this being done, we really, really request that the council take this into consideration because we've done it the democratic, the right way by having everything signed. And this is a win-win situation for everyone. The homeowner will get his fair share, or their fair share, of the market value. The lenders would get better mortgage rates, bigger amounts. And the County of Riverside would get higher property taxes. As well as the city council would not have to waste time going through each and every request for a sale to take their time with all the shortages going on. It's, it's just not necessary. So please, would you please consider taking this off? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address council during public comments? Please come forward at this time.
Good afternoon. Just general public comments, right?
Yes, sir. If you'll give your name to the city clerk, welcome.
My name is Pastor Willie Holland. Push apostolic ministry, Desert Highland Gateway Community, activist. Okay, I'm here because I'm still trying to make some sense out of what's going on. I grew up in Palm Springs and grew up in an area called Desert Highland Gateway area. And I'm still seeing a lot of people being taken advantage of. And whether the city money, money is going, I'm really concerned about that. I see new development going on around us, but I don't see any jobs. I don't see any housing. I don't see anything for the people that's really needed. But what I do see is older people and younger people being taken advantage of and not being protected. The first thing is, I want to stick with my theme is reconstruction, not destruction, for our neighborhood and for our people. Negative image that has been in Desert Highland Gateway, I still need, it still needs to change. It needs to be something positive going on there. Change is something that people, it's hard for people, but it's much needed in that area. Some positive changes. I've seen, I'm, I'm a developer, and I've invested in property, and I've seen property go down in that area. I've seen people try to invest in that area, and it's not working because of the fact that we're not taking care of the real problem, which is the drugs and the gangs and the criminal activity that's in that area, the unemployment and the housing that's in that area. I've seen 400 Avenue of Circa being proposed a senior citizen home there. I've seen all the city say, I can tear it down. That's it. There's nothing else I can do. There's a negative image to the community. I've seen a guy try to conform to the city's policies, and he, and they made it in that area where you have to make one house out of four units. He did it, and he fought through the city, went through the system, and now he's lost the house. Okay, I've seen old people, the Manning House, there's an old lady that owns that house, has been boarded up, the meter's been taken from that for a long time. I've seen that house right now, just people like me, investors, trying to go out and get a family house. Okay, that's not right. That family still live there, and a lot of people need houses in that area. Seen the Session House being boarded up, being taken advantage of. This was a house that, the lady died, and then... Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments? Very good scene. No one will close the public comments. And council, we'll turn your attention to the consent agenda. There are items 1 through 15. Any items you'd like to pull, ask questions on, or note your abstentions? Please do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I will be abstaining on item number three because of proximity to my home.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm going to ask if we could get a brief staff report, since we have five issues, item number five, six, eight, nine, and 10, that are related to a specific project. If we could just get a synopsis report on those.
I would concur on those items being pulled for review.
Okay.
Just discussion.
All right.
Other items?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Russell Spurgeon?
I need to abstain on a warrant. 987750, husband-related.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I'd like just to ask a brief question on number 12 when we get there. And on 15, I need to abstain on two warrants. 987759 and 987760, business-related.
Thank you. I want to pull 11 and 14 for quick questions and comments. And I will be abstaining on item one, the May 7 minutes. Again, I was not in attendance, and I'll abstain because of my absence. Now, with that, abstentions on item one for myself, item three for Mr. Oden, a request to pull five, six, eight, nine, and 10 for an overview on all items by Mr. Oden. And I concur, 11, 12, and 14 to pull. We can either take the remainder of it, or we can go through these things individually, and then at one fell swoop, if we all agree, take concurrence on the whole body.
Let's do it that way.
Let's do it that way then. All right, let's go then first to items five, six, eight, nine, and 10, which deal with the Indian Canyon work from the railroad bridge to the interchange. Perhaps you get a staff report as to the extent of these improvements, and then we'll have Mr. Oden and myself ask questions and so on. Mr. Barakian, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Would you prefer that I do each one individually or in, okay, in total?
Or if you can, just sort of encapsulate the overview and then why each of these are what they are?
Yes. The, the two that are, that are $28,300, basically, these have to do with additional work being required on our federally funded projects, both for the Indian I-10 interchange and for the Indian Avenue widening to the railroad bridge. Two of the, of the items are for the revision to the CVAG agreement, which the executive committee has already approved. And the other two would be for the amendments to our contract with the design firm who is doing the design. So in other words, two of the, of the ones are authorizing regional Measure A funds to be used, which the executive committee has already approved. And the other two are then our authorizing the design engineering firm, Dock and Engineering, to perform that work. And in a nutshell, that's, that's the four.
If I may, on item 10, can you give greater detail as to the $16 million?
The $16 million is the overall total design and construction in the agreement for the Indian I-10 interchange.
Okay. Mr. Oden?
Actually, I just wanted to, really to talk about the fact that it, that these are the monies for the, the interchange there and for the bridge and the widening of the road. So you've actually covered the things that I wanted you to say. Thank you.
But again, what we're buying here are services, not per se the improvements themselves.
That's correct.
Right? And we are currently attempting to get additional funding from the federal government on some T-3, T-21 for Indian Avenue.
And remain hopeful.
And remain hopeful. And clarify me if I'm wrong, David. Under our agreement with CVAG and the original Measure A, this is a funded project by CVAG, and if we can't find alternate sources, we can in fact turn to CVAG for full funding?
Well, we can turn to CVAG for 75% funding.
75%. Okay. So this is to help move along the engineering, the design work and otherwise. But we're not building at this time. A lot of work to be done before we can build.
And get 75%.
We, we provide 20, each city does a 25% match. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we have 25% match? There's your answer. "We're working on it," he says. All right, other questions on those items? No? On item 11, the only question I have is, this is the approval of the purchase of the portable restrooms for use at Village Fest. The report speaks of the fact that we appropriated $35,000. The cost of a single 14-foot trailer is $28,400 and change. In the last paragraph of page 11A2, it speaks of a, a separate unit shall be purchased for ADA compliance. My question is, has it been purchased or can it be purchased? We allocated $35,000. The money is there, but the minute order does not indicate that we're buying the ADA piece. I need just a clarification.
Mr. Mayor, the remaining money would be adequate to cover the ADA compliant unit that has not been purchased, depending on the outcome for tonight.
So if we, if we...
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Since it's less than the amount that council would have had approved for that, we would, assuming the city council approves this tonight, we'll go ahead and buy the ADA one.
Okay. So if we bless the 14-footer, the ADA one will come follow. Okay. I just thought maybe we'd just be tied in with that. That's all I caught. Item 12, Mr. Mills?
I just have a brief question regarding the service agreement. Does anyone, can anyone answer that?
Sure.
Harold?
Harold loves service agreement questions.
This is on the jail cameras, Harold.
Right.
My, my question is, I understand that the first-year service agreement is included in the, in the purchase price.
That's correct.
That's correct.
What goes wrong, or what do you have to maintain on cameras that cost $21,000 a year?
I think it's, what we tried to do was put something together to support the whole system as an entity, and the cameras are the most simple part. Everybody will agree with that. We also have the communication system, and the part of it that's probably the most likely to require a service is the digital recorder. The representative from Metro Video is here, and he might, he certainly has more experience at servicing these in other locales. He might have something to add.
Okay. I'd be interested in hearing that, so.
Good evening, sir. If you'd give the name of the city clerk, you're welcome.
Hi, Todd Byer from Metro Video Systems. The service agreements that we put together are based on several factors. We index the equipment that we'll be servicing and also the time of response that we're required to be there to fix systems that may invariably go down. And like Harold pointed out, the real, the real problems with these larger systems generally ends up in the computing side, which is the digital recorder. We're required to have replacement stock ready to go to roll down here and replace it and keep it online. And this, it's basically, it's a pretty basic formula how we come up with the service agreement.
The, how long is the service agreement for at the price we're looking at here for the 21?
Tech team.
Gee, I'm out manned here.
I'm not sure the question, what's the question?
Harold.
We have, I think we're gonna have all three of this.
And chief, if you could respond to the current system we have now, how often is maintenance required on the system that we have now?
Basically, what we try to do is, when we purchase a system like this, the time to negotiate the service support is at the time you purchase it. Once you've already purchased it, it's too late to negotiate it because then you own it and there's no leverage. So what we attempt to do is to put together a guarantee for a service contract not to exceed the amount should city council electory knew it in the following years for a five-year horizon beyond the initial year. And you can make the choice for each specific year as we go down the road, or not to do it at all.
So in other words, Harold, the 21606 is a five-year service rate?
No, it's per year.
Well, I know, but it's a fixed rate for a five-year period.
Yeah, the intent was to be able to do this in a five-year horizon, and it assumes that we don't add to the system. Obviously, if we add to the system, then it'll go out.
Understand. Now, is the service agreement then for our existing system and the new? Is that right?
This is a completely new turnkey system.
So all the existing cameras are gone?
In the jail, yeah. In the jail, we're replacing the entire system because the whole system is outdated.
Because of the age, yes. So when we look at the map that's in our packet that shows existing and new, it's not really existing, it's existing locations.
It's existing locations, yes. There were 16 existing locations, there will be 32.
Okay. I understand much more than I did before I asked the questions. And very good job on that maintenance agreement, getting the five years. That was one thing I was curious about as well. Thank you.
Of the 16 existing pieces, are they reusable? Any other applications aside from perhaps law enforcement? Or is it just antiquated equipment doesn't work?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's, they're black and white cameras, they're outdated, they're not, I don't think that Harold could get anything for the existing equipment that we have.
We'll try.
We'll try.
It's not a trade-in, though, we don't.
No, it's a very old system.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Item 14, I just need a little explanation on the bulkhead as to the portable nature of this. Is it selected to be portable because it's cheaper than a fixed piece? Is the intent actually relocate it and move it? And can you explain how in fact you take something of this size and, and is it water-filled, Scott? How do you, what is this thing? Aside from a maze, what is this thing?
Essentially, it is portable from the standpoint that it affixes only to the pool coping and the gutter portions of the pool, rather than being cemented or duly affixed to the bottom of the pool. This allows for good water filtration and movement back and forth. In addition to that, it helps quell the wave feature when anybody's swimming within the pool. And that's pretty significant and important when you get down to swim meets and competitive swim meets to where we don't want to create any excessive wave motion in the pool other than what's created by the swimmer himself. That way, it's much more fair. It's made out of stainless steel and weather-resistant fiberboard that is conditioned to be underwater most of the time and can handle the chlorine as well as the desert sun. It's not a fiberglass material. I'm not exactly certain of what it's called, but we researched the materials so that we could find something that would withstand not only the environment of the water, but the environment of the desert.
Yes.
And this particular manufacturer has made them for most of the major universities throughout the United States. They are the standard unit that everybody looks to.
And it can be removed?
Correct.
Stored somewhere?
It's not going to take 10 minutes to remove it. Obviously, it's somewhat labor-intensive, but yes, it can come out of the pool, and that was one of the prime factors that we looked at. That way, in the summertime, and when, or there are less use times in the pool, or where the demand for lanes is not as intense as it is during the swim season.
Right.
We can pull it out, and then the shallow end of the pool can be utilized by the general public, and nobody would know the wiser.
Good. Good, thank you, I appreciate that, Scott. Council, has that addressed all of your particular questions?
Yes.
Again, I'll note the abstentions. I'll abstain on the minutes of May 7th, and Mr. Oden will abstain on item number three. Now, council with that.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Moved by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Thank you. And second by Mr. Oden. And I'll ask for a roll call by Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mayor Klein needs.
Aye. So 40 deemed unanimous. On our public hearing docket tonight, item 16, am I on point here? Yeah, item 16 is case 5.0932. It is PD 284, 803 North Palm Canyon, Paul Shell. And I'll ask for Mr. Ready's staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the construction of a bed and breakfast, and I would turn to Mr. Evans, our director of planning, for the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a planned development district for a nine-unit bed and breakfast facility and 1,542 square feet of retail space located at 803 North Palm Canyon Drive. The property is zone C1, which is a general commercial designation. The planning commission at its April 23rd meeting recommended approval of this project by a 4-0 vote. The planning commission was very pleased with the overall architectural design of the project. They had a couple of comments that they will look at in final development plans, but I think overall, the design of the project was very strongly supported from the standpoint of how it fits in the North Palm Canyon area and really is the type of project that I think the planning commission envisions for some of our smaller lots in the North Palm Canyon area. This site was the former site of a building that burned down a number of years ago. It's been a vacant piece of property since. It's been turfed in, and it's just north of the existing Thai Kitchen Number Two restaurant, I believe, at the intersection of Tamarisk and North Palm Canyon Drive. So it fits into an area, and it really fits into an area that has a very interesting mix of architecture from contemporary to mid-century modern to very traditional Mediterranean-type architecture, and we'll show you some photographs in a moment. The project, as I indicated, has nine bed and breakfast units, including one manager's unit. The manager's unit is about 1,920 square feet, and the rental units or the bed and breakfast units are 610 to 781 square feet. All of the units have some cooking facilities. The smaller units have basically a warm-up type kitchen. The manager's unit has a full kitchen in it. The 1,500-square-foot retail space located right on the street frontage of Palm Canyon Drive is intended to be gallery and other type of retail sales-oriented. It's not intended to have any food service. It would probably be a conflict having the residential units right above food service. Also be an interesting challenge to take care of all the mechanical equipment, so it's really limited to retail-type land uses. The intent there was to try to keep the pedestrian flow along North Palm Canyon Drive from the standpoint of shopping and activity, and then have residential units above those retail spaces on North Palm Canyon Drive and a balcony. And the units that face on North Palm Canyon Drive really have the best of both worlds. They have a balcony overlooking the streetscape and the activity on North Palm Canyon Drive, and then if you turn inward and look back to the mountains, you've got a full view of the San Jacinto Mountains from those key units. The planning commission looked at some modifications to property development standards in this planned development district. They're relatively minor. One-foot modification of the setback on North Palm Canyon Drive from five feet to four feet, and then a minor increase in building height under the R3 standards, but still consistent with the C1 standards. The building height will be 24.5 feet for the mass of the building and architectural feature tower at 40 feet. The open space for a residential project falls back to the R3 zone, which calls for 45% open space. Taking a look at this project, the open space, if you just look at ground open spaces, around 43%. If you take a look at the rooftop decks and areas that would be outdoor activity-oriented, it's probably well in excess. And then if you added the adjacent landscape easement, it's well over the 45% landscape that's required. That's a very quick overview. You have a detailed staff report and resolution and conditions of approval. I won't go through those unless there's any questions. At the planning commission public hearing, as you can see, the entire hearing was conducted in very quick order. There were no public comments. The planning commission had looked at this in a study session, was quite pleased with it, and the planning commission minutes are less than one page on this public hearing item. So the project seems to be very well-fit in the neighborhood since there was no neighboring opposition to it. In fact, there are very few inquiries, other than people that looked at it and thought it'd be a very good addition. With that overview, I'll present the plans. This is the intersection of Techeva. This is the existing restaurant. This is a private accessway into the property, and it provides access to the existing retail space as well as the subject property and also the restaurant. The project is located right on Palm Canyon Drive, again, with the retail on the ground level and a rooftop deck above. The larger units are here, smaller units filling up the back, a recreation building and entryway off the back, a pool area. And then they have worked out an agreement with the adjoining property owner to basically landscape this easement, so there'll be a very generous landscaped easement as you come into the property coming off of South, or North Palm Canyon Drive. The project parking for the bed and breakfast would be within a parking area that's separated a little bit from the rest of the parking. The main parking lot that it currently exists would continue along in this area, and basically there's almost a 90-foot setback from the adjoining property. The property to the west is currently being developed with four residential units. We reported in the weekly update, those units are about 2,000 square feet apiece, and the sales prices are going way up. There's gonna, trying to work out agreements where there'll be some gated access onto this property so that people in those units can come downtown, or excuse me, uptown, without having to go out and around the corner. The planning commission was a little bit concerned that there may not have been a check-in manager's desk in this facility and during the public hearing. We didn't find it. It's actually shown on the plan. There's an entryway that comes in here. You come underneath the tower, there's a check-in desk and area for the bed and breakfast in that location. Architecturally, the building features a range of materials, combination of masonry blocks. Two different types have been proposed for different areas. Stone, as well as stone flatwork and concrete work, some exposed wood trellis elements that will actually be glue-lamb beams. We took a look at the durability of this material, and it was felt in the desert climate, probably not the best material. There's fairly limited use of wood trellis element in this location, a trellis element here. The Palm Canyon Drive elevation is shown here with the storefront on first level, and then moving up to the balcony level, this is the tower element, and that will be approximately 40 feet in height. The south elevation is shown here. Be hard to actually see that elevation. You'll really see this portion of it, and if you come back in the property, you'll see it in a much more intimate setting, so you probably won't see the full elevation. But again, it was very well-received during the design review process. It has a very strong piece of architecture. In a site cross-section, to give you an idea of how it works, the retail at street grade on Palm Canyon Drive, a little bit of a rise up into the bed and breakfast area, dropping back down into a pool area to give it some relief and break, and then coming back up to the parking deck, or parking area level at this location. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that completes our report. I'll certainly try to answer any questions that you have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Council, questions? This is a public hearing, before we open the public hearing. Doug, before you take seat, would you explain how the main entrance off the street is addressing ADA compliance?
These plans do not show that what they've basically originally, I'll work off of the cross-section here. Originally, the main entryway would have stepped up about three feet. What they've done is they've come back in and taken another look at that. There'll probably be a grade change of about 18 inches, and they're going to be able to ramp that. Yeah. Yeah, we, that was one of the technical issues that we worked on. They would much prefer to have a nice rise, so they get a lot more depth when you go back into the back, but it really doesn't work for the accessibility issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
Doug, the parking, so it's a separate gated parking lot for the bed and breakfast? Is that, is that the way I see that?
Originally, the way it was laid out, it was to be a separate parking area with a wall around it, and I think they've reevaluated that, and I think we'll see in the final development plans that this will probably not be a gated area. It will be a separated area so that there's a defined area for the bed and breakfast, so there's not confusion about the general parking in the back. This wall will not be there. I doubt if this wall will be, and this will be more in a landscape condition to separate it out so that there's some control of that. This is a preliminary planned development district, and we've been working with the applicant on refining that space, and it's really under redesign at this point.
And then, just so I understand, the current parking lot back there is, back to the wall at the west, is also part of this property?
That is correct.
Yet they're not developing that specific area of the parking? I know it's part of more parking further to the north.
Mm-hmm.
Is that right? And so you access across that property to get to the north part?
Yes, you would have the ability to access through here, the back section to that parking area on the north.
Now, currently, there's, currently, there's no, no, there's virtually no improvements in that parking in the back. I mean, there, it does not meet our current standard. So the parking that's on the west, that is really part of that other lot, also looks like there's no improvements in that area as well.
It was their hope that... It was their hope that they would kind of work with it the way it is. When we get into final development plans, obviously, we're gonna have to come back in and take a look at the final design of that area.
And I'm... okay. I think the... my thought is that it doesn't have to look tremendously different from the rest, but the intent is that, you know, it looks like there's some improvement there. Is that what the staff report essentially is saying, that there will... that we're not looking at exactly what the final product is gonna be? That will come back again in final development plans?
Correct.
But they won't come back here?
Correct. The final development plans are final with the Planning Commission, and we will work with the applicant to do some upgrades to that area. It's a little bit tight, so we're not gonna be able to meet all of the full improvements. Otherwise, we'd lose parking and possibly compromise the access north-south.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on item 16, please come forward at this time. Very good. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions? Just a quick one, Doug. What is the purpose and use of the... who uses the restroom that's behind the office in the tower? There's a little, small restroom. Is it a public restroom? It seems like it's so remote. Trying to figure out who's the user of that? It's not within the office. It's accessed, actually, through the tower, I think. Is that what I saw on the plan? Is it a public? Is it... Right behind the check-in?
This would be one of the restrooms that would be available for either the manager or the general tenant spaces, even though they're gonna have to do tenant improvements. So it's an additional restroom that's been added.
For the tenants, for the retail users?
It could be used by the tenants as well as the check-in manager.
The reason I ask is because we don't have restrooms that are, if you will, accessible outside of shops or offices in our downtown or our uptown, and people may construe it as a public restroom and then have some sort of access issues and things. It's okay.
The owners in the audience, they'll probably talk to their architect about that tomorrow morning.
There you go. And then secondarily, in looking at the enlarged plan on 16A12, along with that, which is on the board, is the location of the palm tree that exists in the tree well accurate to the entry?
I believe it was the intent that these are the approximate location of the existing palms.
And I was just wondering if, in fact, is that the Publix, dare I say? Is that the bed and breakfast guests' access to and from the street? They'd use that tower as their entry point back and forth. Is that correct?
If they chose to come out that way, actually, the owner really feels that a lot of the activity with the guests will be out through the back for convenience sake, just in their looking at the operation, and they're experienced B&amp;B operators in the Pacific Northwest. But yes, this could be a main access way or a primary access way to South Palm... or North Palm Canyon.
I was only looking at the idea, if it is an entrance to somehow modify the landscaping to make it look like it's a landscaped entry... right now, you're walking out into a tree well. If you're trying to find this location from the street, you can't. There's no sense of entry. It's a doorway between two retail, so I don't know what the intended user is, but right now, you're not gonna find it. It looks like a recessed door between two stores, so it has no sense of entry. The tower is exciting, but the tower vertical element is not related to the streetscape. It has no relationship to the trees. It's a tower that has no use, if you will. It's like there's a tree in the way. I don't know if I want to request maybe an analysis in the landscape as to how to enhance that.
You know, every time we've talked about the B&amp;B operation, they really have downplayed the entry on Palm Canyon for the B&amp;B. It's really a secondary one operationally, but I agree that, you know, we could take a look at that and, you know, possibly take a look at how we might adjust that to create an entry statement. The applicant's got a wonderful design team. They've been very responsive all the way through, and all they need is suggestions, and they've come up with good solutions all the way through.
Okay. Again, I just see a little inconsistency. Big tower sensing entry, and then the tree kind of blocks it, so it's...
Yeah.
All right. Counsel, other questions, comments? We'll enter motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
The only comment that I would like to see is kind of where I was going before on the parking lot, and that is that if we're gonna encourage redevelopment in that parking lot currently on the west side, that I think this is a good place to start. And I'm not saying to meet ordinance standards for the sake of losing parking spaces. I'm just saying a creative look at ways of enhancing that parking lot towards the west, and I think it's very easily done, very inexpensively done. I do think this is... this project is an excellent project, both architecturally and use-wise. I think it's kind of what we've been encouraging. In this area of town, it'd be great. I think in any area of uptown, downtown, this specific use, I think, would work very well. And Mr. Evans, I trust you'll caution them on using wood in the desert, about heavy texture and bolted connections and all that type of thing, just so they don't have a maintenance problem, as we all know happens. But with that, I would move approval.
I'll second it.
Motion for approval on Mr. Mills and a second by Mr. Oden. And the only comment I want to make is realize that this is in a location where not a lot, but some events do occur and that do require street closure, and there will be some kind of an access problem. And the only other hotel we deal with that has access problems is the Hyatt, and we maintain an access lane. And I don't know how you'd get an access lane without crossing the street closure to get into it. So as long as the B&amp;B operator understands that we do on occasions close it for parades, they move to the north, they have staging areas, it could cause some interruption in the day-to-day during those celebrations. And the number of parades is pretty much known, but this is a staging area and a parade route, and it will, in fact, be a closed street during that very limited point of the year. And I don't know how the special events planning team would get them in there and maintain a parade route. So just a note of caution. Streets do close when parades go on, and we don't have hotels shy of the Hyatt that has a side street we can get them in on. Monte Vista has the back street off of Indian, so you can still get in, but this would cause an isolated, if you will, hospitality property that we don't have to deal with right now. Okay? So as long as the record shows that the owners are aware of those closures and try to work with us on that, it's gonna be very difficult, at least to my knowledge, how to open this up while there's an event going on. Okay? Again, we don't have that kind of issue currently. There's a motion by Mr. Mills and a second by Mr. Oden. And with that, do you need a roll on this? No, I don't think so. Do you?
Probably.
All right, yes, we'll roll.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Reller Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mayor Klein de...
Aye, 4-0. It's unanimous. We look forward to this new and exciting development in our uptown area. We'll now turn to council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
On Thursday, I attended the Riverside County Community Action Commission meeting. In actuality, I was ill on Tuesday and actually Wednesday, but there was a reception in Los Angeles and a rally, a rally to end poverty, and it was held on the steps of City Hall in downtown Los Angeles. There was a bus that went from Riverside County and went into Los Angeles, and so we had a very good representation from Riverside and from San Bernardino. I'd just like to say special happy belated birthday to Officer Nancy Carr. And on Saturday evening, I attended the fabulous Palm Springs Follies. And, you know, I manage to go every year, and the show and presentation simply gets better and better. This year, I had the opportunity to talk with a lot of people who, as they were exiting. And so many people thanked the city for having the Follies, in that how many of them actually return every year and base certain times of the year specifically to return here to go to the Follies, and how many people that they refer to come here every year. So I just want to say thank you to the Jardines and to Riff and to all the members of the Follies who have done and who are currently doing so much for our community. Thank you. On today, I attended a special service and received a plaque on behalf of the city, and it says, "The City of Palm Springs, May 21, 2003. The well in the desert acknowledges with appreciation the city's efforts to serve their poor and homeless by allowing the well's use of the fray building." On the bottom, it says, "Happy are those who are concerned for the poor, for the Lord will help them when they are in trouble," Psalms 41:1. It was a very well-attended meeting today, and they also acknowledged several people there. Dolly Landon, who is 90 years old, who is one of their chief volunteers. This is really an exceptional lady, and I think they did a lot of things to make her feel special for the work that she does to help so many. And also to their chef, Lanny Tucker, who has also contributed a great deal. As you know, Dr. Wayne McKinney received an award as the second Champions of Justice for Riverside County, but he also received an additional award today from the Department of Community Action of Riverside County by the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to say also that next... let me deal with this first. A couple of days ago, there was an article in the paper regarding Dana and her illness, even though she had been in the hospital for several weeks. They decided to run the story, and she was actually released the next day. But I just wanted to... I asked the clerk for some information, and just like to read this, just so that it kind of clears up some issues for people from the community, because so many people have asked questions. On May 19, 2003, the Desert Sun reported that Councilmember Hodges had been absent the past 47 consecutive days. Councilmember Hodges did, in fact, attend a regularly scheduled closed session on April 23, 2003. The attendance was reported by the mayor in open study session on April 23, 2003. Ms. Hodges' absences would then start the count all over again. So she's not at 47 consecutive absences, as the Desert Sun reported. And there's also a reference for those who might want this additional information from the charter. I will be absent next week. I will be attending my youngest daughter's graduation from middle school. I will be in New Orleans, so there are some requests for specific events, presentations for next week, and I would hope that we could perhaps do them in two weeks rather than next week.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Any other council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports?
Yes, if I may.
Ms. Reller Spurgeon?
To follow up with what Ron was speaking about in regard to Dana, it says in the charter that unless she is given permission by the city council in its regularly official minutes... and I just want to say that, as far as I'm concerned, we all supported her when she had her press conference in January, and I want to go on record that I support her now and I'll support her next week and next month and six months from now, if need be, that that's the right thing to do. Thank you. Oh, as far as the... that I give her... I excuse her.
Ah, so you're saying...
Gonna give her a hall pass, huh?
Mr. Mayor?
And Mr. Oden?
There is a provision here that says that we can excuse, as a council, these absences. So I appreciate very much, Gina, you sharing that information, and I concur.
Very good. Other council comments or inter-agency reports? Mr. Mills? Last Thursday, the city council and the tribal council had its, I would guess, say, quarterly joint meeting. We had light attendance, three on our side, I think, three on their side. There were some absences on both sides, but the intent was, and still is, to allow for a dialogue between the two governing bodies of the City of Palm Springs. We gave a fairly detailed review of our budget position, the same one we had given on the Wednesday before, and the tribe is now at least more aware in detail as to our current fiscal dilemma. And we had a number of issues on updates on common transportation projects, the casino update, and so on and so forth. So dialogue remains strong and open between the two bodies, and we did a fair amount of laughing, which speaks highly to the relationship that we do have with the Aguascalientes. We are, as everyone knows, a hospitality-based community. It is vitally important that we have conventions that come in and fill our convention center and obviously fill our hotels, and we're trying to do that by expanding our convention center. This week, the Ninth Annual Clean Cities Conference came in. I worked with the team almost two years ago, competing to bring the conference here. We secured it and then worked for the next year and a half, trying to make sure everything worked out. The conference started Monday morning promptly. I joined a number of speakers in a welcoming ceremony, a number of exhibitors, and so on and so forth. Suzanne Summers made a surprise visit during one of the panels and dropped them absolutely to their knees. They couldn't believe it all of a sudden. Please, we have to stop the panel. Please welcome a special guest, in-came Suzanne Summers, and praised the work that they do and the importance of clean air and alternate fuel vehicles. It was remarkable. And then this morning, oddly enough, a gentleman who portrays with great detail and accuracy, President Thomas Jefferson, came up and debated what he would have done had he been president today, and where we have gone astray, and his states' rights versus the federal. It was an amazing debate, very informative. The conference, for all practical purposes, this was the ninth annual. It was the largest attendees in their history. They had the most exhibitors. They had sold out beyond their lodging request initially. More people came. More corporate partners. Everyone I spoke to, from Ford representatives to Honda to Toyota, to people from Michigan, Vancouver, New York, Baton Rouge, all thoroughly enjoyed Palm Springs. All of them pretty much said the same thing. We didn't know how great this town was, how easy it is to enjoy it here, how comfortable it is to get from the airport to the convention center, how nice your downtown is. I mean, the praise just kept on falling out. Many of them did, in fact, say, "I'm going to go back home and bring my next conference here." I didn't know that this is what it was, that we don't want to go to the big urban centers and so on and so forth. We want to come here where it's comfortable and easy and otherwise. They were out in a number of restaurants. There was a reception last night at Atlas, a big dinner over at St. James. I mean, they were clearly out in the community. This was the conference council that we suspended the fees on today's golf. I'm not sure that they filled the field by any stretch of the imagination, but the gesture was greatly appreciated from the federal side all the way through the state and regional areas. They have never had a more sense of welcome from a community where they went, and we demonstrated, not just by welcoming speeches and so on, but we demonstrated our commitment to what they did by the nature of the vehicles we put on display, from all that we have in our alternate fuel fleet, Sunline, trash haulers, you name the vehicle. They were out in force and very impressive at that. We even had our hydrogen-fuel cell bus out there, which people's mouths drop because they just don't have hydrogen-fuel cell buses. So a great success. The intent I had with some of the board members in my deliberations were to try to bring them back on a three-year rotation. They do a west, a mid, and an east. Next year, they're gonna go to Fort Lauderdale, and then they're gonna try to do either Albuquerque or Minnesota, and I'm trying to bring them back, if you will, three years out, to come back to the west venue and let us become, as AOPA, let this become their west location. And they actually gave it very serious consideration, considering how easy it was here. So the work goes on. Very well done. This weekend, for those of you interested in it, this will be, in fact, Memorial Day weekend, and there are two services that I'm aware of. And because of the recent efforts in Iraq and the loss of some Marines, we have two ceremonies scheduled, one at nine o'clock at the cemetery and 11 o'clock at the Palm Springs Mortuary. Both will be highlighting, of course, the loss of lives in the most recent military action. If you have a great appreciation for those who have served, Memorial Day is that day to remember those who did not come home. And we suggest that you come join us. Every year, the crowd gets a little bigger. It's never a really great crowd. When you consider the great sacrifices of those Americans who provided the safety of our freedoms, it would give great reward to those who have returned and are still alive to see people actually celebrate the great sacrifices that all of them made. So if you can make it, nine o'clock at the cemetery and 11 o'clock across the street at the mortuary. It is always a wonderfully moving ceremony when you hear soldiers talk of their personal loss and their personal... ceremony when you hear soldiers talk of their personal loss and their personal experiences. So if you can make it. Okay?
With that, we'll turn to our ledge calendar. Item 17 and item 18, I believe, have been pulled. Is that right? Item 19 is a street lighting district number one, and I'll turn to Mr. Ready for a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you did hear the request during the public comment period, and I did get that same request from several of the members of the tennis club, and actually, they are requesting that, in essence, council not approve and actually pull this from the agenda and allow the neighborhood groups to do the informal surveying and working of their neighborhood throughout the summer months and come back in the fall with their own plan. Again, this is something that we have been working with the neighborhoods. There has not been a lot of response, for whatever reason, and so this is our next step in the process to make sure that the residents are aware that this process is taking place, that we actually do this election by mail, so they become aware. But again, it's incumbent upon those residents, they want to take this upon themselves, to do the legwork, if you will, and to do the surveys, continue that process, and come back with an actual plan and the yea or nays from their community members. So as far as staff is concerned, we would have no opposition to them continuing on. It's here before you as the next step in the process, so if it pleases the council, staff would have no objection to allowing them to go forth.
I don't have a problem with the residents trying to work on what they want in their neighborhood. Everyone, I think, that's aware of this lighting district. This is in the tennis club area. This is a 1960s lighting system that is 80% functional. You can't buy replacement parts. The light fixtures are kind of failing us. Conduits are rusting and so on and so forth. So it's gone beyond just changing light bulbs. I think it's a massive upgrade, as I understand it, to bring it up to speed. There are tremendous costs involved with that, and I think the residents should be aware of it. If they choose not to move forward, again, you're at 80% functional and diminishing over time, and at some point the system will fail, and then there has to be some debate and cost associated with removal of it. If you don't want to replace it, you just can't leave, you know, obviously defunct fixtures, so we have to get to that point. But I welcome the input from the community. Council, what's your pleasure?
Do we need a motion to that effect?
Actually, I would just pull it from the agenda and bring it back to a later time.
Okay. I think it's commendable that the neighborhood is that concerned and involved in trying to decide what they want to see in the community, so.
I concur. Okay, we'll pull that, Mr. Ready?
Thank you.
City manager requests to pull item 19. We'll go to item 20, the Gene Autry Trail, Ramone Road, median landscape project. This is a 2002-2003 fiscal year budget amendment. And Mr. Ready, I'll turn to your staff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would ask the city engineer to give the staff report. This is basically an update on the median landscaping and maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. This item concerns the median project that was recently awarded on Gene Autry Trail and on Ramone Road. If you will recall, council awarded an option to increase the size of the plants and basically directed staff to find additional Measure A dollars for this. This item appropriates those additional Measure A dollars from fund balance, and we recommend its approval in order to construct the larger plant, five-gallon plants. Five-gallon plants, yes.
Very good. Thank you, David. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
This was a part of our discussion earlier, and we thought that the five-gallon would be much better than the one, so with that, I would move the resolution.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Oden. Here's our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mills. I concur. The council's intent is to put a little bit more money in to make it a special project. All right, with that, any further comments? Otherwise, I'll turn to the city clerk for a roll call, please.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Mr. Reller Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mayor Kleindeans?
Aye. It's four-oh deemed unanimous. Item 21 is merged Area 1 and 2 Loans and Repayment, 2002-2003. This is, I think, an accompanying piece to our CRA action earlier.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a companion legislation piece, and we would ask your approval to the CRA previous that you did approve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, move both resolutions.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Mills and second by Ms. Reller Spurgeon. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call again, please.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Reller Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mayor Kleindeans?
Aye. Four-oh deemed unanimous. Item 22 is the Palm Springs Skate Park. Mr. Ready, let's see if we can't build this thing.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased to present to you this evening the construction contract for the skate park. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, the school board granted our quitclaim deed and request for the 30-foot easement. This is the final process in terms of bringing the construction contract to you. What you have in front of you and we request that you approve is the actual low-bid construction contract and then the first change order, which is actually a change order lowering the price. And I would ask David Bracken, our city engineer, to come to the podium to answer any specific questions you might have, and also Harold Good is here to answer any of the purchasing questions. And the first thing that I will have for you, once this is approved, hopefully by the first of next week, is an actual timeline of the construction process. And with that, we would certainly recommend approval, and thank you.
Very good. Counsel, have any specific questions or comments at this time? Again, I want to thank Mr. Mills, who did pull this last week, I think, to review some of the numbers, and based on his most recent track record in doing that kind of work. If he's comfortable with it, I think council would feel, I think, very comfortable in giving concurrence. Mr. Mills, you want to report on what you discovered, have any problems at this point?
I'd like to move the minute orders, both of them, and I think we are well on our way, and I wish they were further up in the agenda, so we didn't have to wait so long.
It's through a second.
I'll second.
It's a second by Mr. Oden. Thank you. Any further comments?
Finally.
Finally, I want to thank staff for their diligent work trying to get... This has been a tough and rocky road, but we got it. I think we got it this time. We're there. And a special thanks to the Palm Springs Unified School District, Board of Education, allowing us with a quitclaim to get that additional 30 feet. Otherwise, we would have been a complete quandary as to what to do. Massive expenses and redraw. This way, we could just shift it 30 feet and get this underway that much faster. So hats off to the Board of Education. With that, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Reller Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Four-oh, again, deemed unanimous.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I would like to mention that my hat's certainly off to staff. It was a very complicated thing to do. I know they analyze sites all over the place. It was a difficult thing to do. It worked out fairly cleanly, and I think they did an excellent job. So thank you, all of you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item 23 is an ordinance for second reading and adoption, first introduced on 5/7/03. And again, I'll turn to Mr. Ready for a brief staff report.
Yes, this is the ordinance. Do you want to read it, waving the text?
I'll make a motion to...
Yes, so moved.
And I'll second. The entitled waving text. Go ahead.
Yes, this is an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending the zoning map by approving a change of zone from PD 164 to PD 164A for the property located at 277 North Avenue to Cavalero, Zone PD 164, Section 14.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Reller Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mayor Kleindeans?
Aye. It's four-oh deemed unanimous. Item 24 is an exchange agreement between Barney Trust for some open space. I have a conflict. I have a business relationship with those who are involved with the Barney Trust, so I will be passing the gavel to Mr. Oden and stepping out of chamber.
Staff report, please.
Thank you. I would ask Doug Evans, our director of planning, to give a staff report on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that John Raymond, Economic Development and Community Development Director, has been working on in conjunction with a number of other city staff members. It's an exchange agreement. It's really a very creative way for the city to take existing open space, 45 acres, make a trade or transfer with a private property owner for an additional equal amount of land, in this case, 45 acres. And at that point, what we basically have accomplished is created approximately 90 acres of open space at no cost to a public agency. The property that the city will trade to the Barney Trust will have an open space easement on it. The only improvements they will be allowed to make will be a small trail connecting two homes on the properties, as well as some minor landscape improvements and a fence for security purposes. And then the property that the city would receive in exchange is 45 acres of land up near the Chino Cone. It's just north of the property that was donated to the city by Shadow Rock, so it will increase our holdings in that particular area by 45 acres. Both properties are good habitat for peninsular bighorn sheep, so we're achieving our open space and biological objectives by trying to acquire as much open space as we can. At this point, the City of Palm Springs owns, well, soon to own, well over 3,000 acres. We own almost all of the San Jacinto Mountains that form the backdrop to Palm Springs. We recommend approval of this exchange agreement. There might be some wording changes, and the 45 acres that are addressed in this agreement are yet to be fully determined. There are existing park and trail facilities that will be excluded, so the city will retain ownership of those, and the agreement basically says staff will work on the final legal descriptions, and if there's any concerns, we'll certainly brief the council before we approve them. That completes our report, Mr. Chairman, or, excuse me, I was... Mr. Mayor, I mixed this up with a daytime planning commission meeting and my air. Thank you, sir.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Mills and second by Councilmember Reller Spurgeon. Roll call.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Reller Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mayor Kleindeans?
Absent.
It passes 3:1. And I will pass the gavel back to the mayor. We move to item 25.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Oden. I watched you on TV. You are absolutely stellar.
I know.
Item 25, I believe, is a supplemental item. This is an additional legislative item. It is dealing with the 60-91-215 interchange funding. The request is that we demonstrate our support for this through the CTC as the number-one priority transportation project for the county of Riverside. If you need any additional... I think I had mentioned this earlier. This is a bit of a bottleneck. Obviously, 60 comes in off the Badlands, hits the 215, and then trying to get to the 91 to get to the beaches. Although it may not be for our personal use, the difficulty we have in the great county of Riverside is that people cannot move in and out through that interchange. It is behind schedule. It is a massively expensive interchange. What are they caught here, $250 million, $350 million? And what we're trying to do is get the limited funding available through the state of California, and we want to try to get cities of the entire county to demonstrate the support, so that the CTC can see that it is not just a single jurisdiction, it's the entire county. And as mentioned at the joint session of the tribe last week, we indicated our desire to have them consider actually writing a resolution of support also. So it's actually at our CTC's request that this be put on the council's
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oden and second by Ms. Reller Spurgeon to support the resolution. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's four-oh. It's deemed unanimous. At this time, Mr. Ready, are there any additional starters?
There are none, sir.
Are there any reports or requests, city council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There was a request this evening from the New Tax Association to agendize their issue. I would just ask if we're going to agendize it, that it would be in a couple of weeks, the first meeting in June, because I'll be away the next week.
You're away next week, yeah. And that should be brought forward, I think, at a study session more than an action, to get a full explanation...
That would be fine.
Full implications on it, so. Okay?
Okay.
Additional reports or requests?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Also, we had requested a while back the extended services for the well in the desert. I'd like an updated report on where we are with that. And also, there was a request tonight from Quail Point, and we... I don't know if you might want that to come back to us in study session as well. Yeah, I think so. And as a matter of fact, last week, in part of our conversation, Mr. Mayor was thinking about what you said about one of the groups and having some sort of oversight, and I'd like to agendize for a study session an advisory group for tourism. So I'd like to bring that back for some discussion as well.
Okay. Other council requests?
I would like, before it comes on the Quail Point, if we can get a staff report in our packet to see what's going on. I know there's some restrictions that we ourselves put in place based on some housing, so that we have put those restrictions in for a reason, and I think the council should be fully aware of those and briefed, and then when we go into a study session, we're obviously more educated on what the issue is.
That would be fine.
Additionally, we had done some work in prior weeks on the Quimby Act. I want to know what the schedule is to bring that forward for council action. As indicated by even some of the comments by the public tonight, a phenomenal amount of housing units being built. This will not affect them. It is those that are coming through the pipeline that we're trying to actually capture some of the money. If you start adding up the number of units in the past 12 to 15 months, it's been a phenomenal amount of houses, and if you assign any kind of a dollar amount you want to it, it'd be a lot of money to actually improve the parks in the City of Palm Springs. Counsel, we got a copy... I think you got a copy of this, too, the sort of the status list of all the appointments. I want to just make some clarifications. Mr. Ready, you have some... You had had a conversation with Ms. Hodges regarding the SEVAG Executive Committee. Can you relay that to the council at this time, please?
Yes, as it turns out, the issue actually on SEVAG, the mayors of the cities are the actual members of the SEVAG Executive Committee. The designee is the member designated by council, which in this case, which is councilmember Hodges. The City of Palm Springs had not designated an alternate. So that would be designated by a letter from the mayor, according to John Wollmuth. So in essence, we do not have designate an alternate, so that would need to be done. So right now, we have the member, which is the mayor, and the designee, which is councilmember Hodges.
And what you want to do is assign the alternate?
That's correct, and that can be done by letter from the mayor.
Right. It's a peculiar sort of arrangement. It's not like any others that I've found. The mayor is the designee. I select an alternate, but the council picks a designee, as if... In that way, there's three names. In the event that someone can't go, you're really in trouble, but...
And if I may, Mayor, if the designee is there, which in this case is member Hodges, the member, which is the mayor or the alternate, if by chance they are there, are not voting members. The designee is the voting members unless she's not there.
Okay.
Okay.
She's done an excellent job and been very, very good about that.
Yeah, very committed to that.
Very.
This was brought up, I think, in some discussions Mr. Ready had had with Dana, so we try to clarify that, so we can make sure we have attendance. Sometimes I can't go, I get late notices, so this was then revealed by Mr. Ready's investigation. So in this case, then I become primary, and then I appoint an alternate, and then Dana is the designee. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. In essence, Dana is the primary, and either the member, which is you, or the alternate could go in the second place. Again, it's just your decision or the alternate.
Okay.
In the event the designee cannot attend.
Very good. Well, then we'll make that amendment to the schedule here, and I'll... Does anyone choose? Mr. Mills, you're working on habitat issues, and I think at the executive level...
He'd love to do it, he said.
You'd like to do the... You want to be the alternate, then?
The alternate.
All right, so then show me primary, Mr. Mills, alternate, and Ms. Hodges as the council designee. So we've got three names, so we can get somebody to make sure they get to that meeting. Additionally, on this list, under the SEVAG Public Safety, I'd like to put a dot after PUB, because I don't think Ms. Reller Spurgeon would serve on a pub safety committee. So I think the dot there would be important. Additionally, on the PS Desert Resorts CVA Executive Board, on the venue location, it is not the Rancho Mirage City Hall. The venue changes with the chair. Although I'm chairing this year, out of respect to the members that come from so far away, I chose Palm Desert as the central location, so the meetings are held in Palm Desert, not in Rancho Mirage, if you could reflect that change. Under the RCTC, the time of the meeting is no longer 10 o'clock for update purposes. It is at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. It is the correct Wednesday, as illustrated, but it's at 9:00 o'clock. On the Main Street Liaison, I'd like to note on this list that it is the first Thursday, 7:30 in the morning, and it's at the Downtown Development Office. 7:30 in the morning, and it's at the Downtown Development Office. On the Risk Management Insurance Authority, inasmuch as Nancy Jo McIntosh is no longer our employee, I'd like to strike her name from that. And again, if Ms. Reller Spurgeon still is serving, then Dana will be your staff liaison when you're called to that. I think that's a as-needed basis.
P-R-N.
I never get that right. Okay. Additionally, under the Subcommittee Assignments, Jeannie and I do serve on the Special Events Subcommittee, although we have not met in quite some time. I think there's been some discussions of bringing that back. I'd like to note that on an additional Subcommittee is the, dare I say, SMG Convention Center Tourism Contract. Mr. Oden and I are, I believe the council's designee on that Subcommittee. Mr. Oden, is that concurrence? And then on the Convention Center Subcommittee, it's myself and Mr. Mills. And there are other Subcommittees that are not listed that you're aware of. Please tell clerk at this time so the list can be revised again and be updated. But I think that's all I can remember on Subcommittee's. We got the school one on here. Ron and I are on that. Wastewater, again, Ron and I serve on that.
Is the Visitor Center one?
Oh, the Visitor Center? You may want to put down there then the Visitors Center, and I believe that is Mr. Mills and myself again. Okay, are there any other Subcommittee's that are actively working? Wasn't there a Subcommittee on Follies? Who's doing that work?
Oh, that was Ron.
Ron and Mr. Mills was doing Palm Springs Follies, that negotiation. And I think, Jeannie, you and Dana served on a downtown noise. Is that completed?
I hope so.
Haven't been called up for a while, have you? We'll let that go then. I don't think you're actively involved at this point.
No, we haven't been for a few years.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, that's all my corrections. And then otherwise, Mr. Oden, you have this Pacific Housing Finance Agency Associated Board Member, and on the time and location, that's just question marks. Can we just put on-call there?
That's fine.
As the one above it says.
That's fine.
P-R-N, as they say.
Community Action Commission, Ashley, it's the third Thursday.
Community Action, where is that, Mr. Oden?
This is on Main Street, Chamber, Main Street, Community Action.
Oh, yeah. Give me the dates again, sir. First Thursday?
Third Thursday.
Third. So you're going to want these on here, because that's why we ran into problems with the joint meeting.